Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure I have, but I can only imagine what I will be like when I lose.
It's controlling.
Students.
Twenty.
Okay, down. I consider. But I was gonna have to take off for Gomston. I was gonna have to take off for my mom's celebration of life. It just.
Just want to remind everybody that there is a sign-in sheet in the back, so please take home the sign-in. I was looking at you.
So, thank you.
Curly signing. You have to sign in in the back.
Who this one?
I'm just making sure it stays live, you know. It's horrible. But it looks good, so.
We had a couple more people coming in. We'll give them a second.
Okay.
Please make sure to sign in in the back there. Or have somebody sign in for you. Just give them a couple moments. Wait, as long as we're still going on the livestream.
Yep.
We're here, so we started on time.
I think we're in good shape.
But. Everybody else is coming in. Somebody's still signing in. All right, we'll go ahead and come to order.
Mayor.
Yes. Last one.
Sarah.
Yes.
Autumn.
Yes ma'am.
Justin.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Please stand for the prayer and make for the pledge. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. And I ask that you look over all of us and guide us and bless us. And I ask that you look over this governing body and help them to make good decisions. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Am I allowed to read it? Great. So I would like to present this plaque to.
Do we need to read the item individually first?
Well, can I read it? Do I stand?
However, okay.
I'd like to present this plaque to Jason Schilling in recognition of his service to the citizens of Perkins as Ward Four Commissioner from 2015 to 2016 and as mayor from 2016 to 2022. Thank you, Mayor, for your service.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody. It's been, it's hard to believe it's been as long as it's been. It's been an incredible experience. Learned a lot, worked alongside of very wonderful people on the commission and City Hall and Police Department. We've accomplished a lot of wonderful things. And I've always believed in and I still believe now that our biggest accomplishments are still ahead of us. So I'm excited for the future. Excited for the members of this board. I'm excited for our new mayor. I think that we're, we're gonna see some very wonderful things happen. So, thank all again. Thank you.
You're the only one, but I'll stand in front of you here.
Did we stop? Did it stop?
No, it's not.
I was just making sure.
Okay. Okay, oath of office. Mayor Harla Cummings. Where is he doing it down there?
Where do you want me?
Right there. Raise your right hand. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Carla Suzanne Cummings.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable things.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As mayor to the best of my ability.
As mayor to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Can I get my notes? Thank you, sir. Take out my handy dandy notes.
You're welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. After all the pomp and circumstance, let's get on with business. Next order of business is consideration and action on consent agenda. Oh, thank you. Nomination in the election of Vice Mayor. So, I would like to nominate Autumn Footh as Vice Mayor.
Second that nomination.
That.
Mayor?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Okay, now to the consideration and action on consent agenda. All right. We'll call each item individually. A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting, March 8, 2022. Approval of minutes of the special meeting, March 29, 2022. Approval of purchase orders, acceptance of financial report, approval of 2022 fair housing proclamation, reappointment of Brian Norton to the Planning Commission, term ending June 2025. Reappointment of Brian Norton to Flood Plane Board, term ending June 2025. Reappointment of Joan Thompson to Planning Commission, term ending June 2025. And reappointment of Joan Thompson to Flood Plane Board, term ending June 2025. Approval of annual blanket bond covering the city manager, director of finance, city clerk, and mayor at $50,000 each and all other city public works employees at $10,000 each. Acceptance of city manager's report.
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Aaron?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we move to number nine. Public appearances, petitions. Wrong set, sorry. Communications and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action not on today's agenda.
Has anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Moving on to number 10. Consideration and discussion regarding the Kirk Avenue project with project manager Michael Taylor. Alan Prog, group engineering. Sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor. Commissioners, I'm here for my standing update for the Kirk Avenue project. Apparently, most of the concrete has been placed. There is some backfill and fine grading that's going on. Still lack some fine grading in the street before we're able to place pavement. As well, there will be some sodding remaining and other cleanup of general items along Phase Four. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Do we have any update on getting a example of what your solution is to fixing my driveway, my neighbor's driveway, and our curbs?
We are working with the city right now and we'll get you response or you to remediate what we've been talking about.
Anyone else have any comments or discussions?
What is your, yeah, thanks, Mayor. What is your, what's your timeline to completion approximately now? We ask this all the time and I know it's a moving target, but just kind of where are we looking now?
Depending on where we get, there's a chance that pavement could be set in the next week. That means that we'd have to get the street fine graded and any, any chance of heavy equipment off. And that includes.
So will you, will we be able to have this meeting and come to a resolution before you start that process? Because I am.
Talking with the contractor, they would like to have that resolved before placing pavement.
So, if you're wanting pavement next week, then we need to have that discussion very soon?
Pavement or pave?
Pavement.
Pavement, sorry, pavement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for public record, I'm not very pleased with the results that are happening. And I hope that after our meeting, we have a solution that we're both happy with. Because as it stands right now, you know, the public doesn't necessarily know that I'm very unhappy. And I think it's only fair that everyone in the community understands how unhappy I and my neighbors are with the situation at hand. And you know this, but I think it's only fair that the community is aware of the situation. And I truly hope that after our meeting, we both have a solution because.
I hope we can reach a reasonable resolution.
I do too.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for the next time.
All right. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the contract with, I hope I don't say it wrong, Bayco Incorporated for project restoration replacement at the cost of $110,909, funding through American Rescue Plan Act and Rural Economic Action Plan Grant.
These bids were open and recommended for award. This is the next step in getting the contracts approved that we've been working with the contractor to get in your hands. And we recommend approval of this contract to get this project going.
I think it did.
Good. Thank you. I make a motion to approve.
Can I ask a quick question?
You betcha.
Give me a second and let me think of how exactly I'd like to word this. Please. Do you have the plans or the scope of the project drawn out already? Or have you meant that right? Have you?
Yeah, we had to provide those for bidding it. And that was specifications and a couple of plan sheets for that repair and replacement items.
So, with the location of where this is going to take place, does this have any impact directly to the citizens or a home of a citizen in our town?
I guess we'd have to define a home. It's in the RV park.
Can we see that plan at some point? Because as mentioned, I want to see what these plans look like at the final before I do things now after the experiences we've had.
So are we going to table this for the next meeting?
I am okay with continuing the process. I would like to see, I would like to see it in paper. Before I, just, I think that's just gonna be how it is for me from now on.
We're, we're just, we think, Rachel and I are not remembering whether the specifications were put on for approval prior to the bid, whether the commission has actually seen those yet, but.
Can I ask for that or not?
You can.
Yes. I'm just not sure whether we've already provided them or not. No, you haven't seen it? Okay, yeah.
For public record, anybody can ask for them. And I believe we, we had approval to go to bid.
Right.
And they were in the packets, but it's no problem to send it.
But we can get it again.
I just.
And you might have already seen it.
Yeah.
If we have, then I fail to remember seeing it. And that could very easily be the case. I just would like to look at it again.
I think we had a scope work, but I don't know that we got a specific design plan.
We'll get it.
Okay, moving on.
So I made a motion to approve.
We made a motion. I'm sorry.
To approve the contract yet. That's the agenda items to approve the contract. So I made a motion to approve the contract. I'll second it.
Aaron?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding project options for inclusion in the Rebuilding America's Infrastructure, Sustainability, and Energy Grant application, otherwise known as RACE.
So, the commission previously approved a Bob to engage with GrantScribe for a grant. The anticipation would be some drainage improvements, repay, some streets, maybe some sidewalks. And I think the grant was gonna be around a million dollars with some match requirements. Digging into this with GrantScribe a little bit, the intent really of the RACE grants is to improve infrastructure, but also help to bring more vehicles off the road. That means better sidewalks, more accessibility, and also bike lanes. Among other things, a charging station somewhere for an electric vehicle. And when we were digging in with GrantScribe, you really need some of these things to get this grant. And that said, they asked that we come to the board and consider increasing the grant amount to 100% grant and also increasing the scope of the project a little bit. So it would be a higher grant amount that they're applying for, but you get more points by adding bike lanes or charging station at, let's say, City Hall. We're still talking through that. And it also would help with some additional areas that we could improve on storm drains, things like that, as well as, as I said, accessibility on sidewalks and updating them.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. I read, I read city manager's information on that and I strongly recommend that we raise the scope of the project to include those and reach out for maximum funding. And ADA compliance, bicycle lanes, all, all of the above. I know that's greater in scope, but you know, I mean, that's, to go from partial funding to maximum funding, if those are the kinds of things we need to add, then that's obvious to me.
It's my understanding it's still scalable after you are awarded the grant. What we're gonna do is pick some blocks or, or even a mile that connects the middle school closer to the work on Kirk Avenue.
I mean, obviously, if you ever walk the sidewalk between the corner here and the school, you know, it's a challenge. It's not an ADA accessible. There's not one when you go to the east. So, all of those kinds of things would be important. I didn't make a full motion, but you can second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Aaron. I thought I heard it.
I just made a recommendation that we increase the scope.
I was getting ready to ask them if they had any thoughts. Okay, I. You're ready for a motion?
So I'll do that now.
You started this.
You can make the motion now.
I make the motion that we pass for the RACE grant application and we increase the scope of the project.
I will second.
Good job. Bit of levity. I was kidding. Sorry about that. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to amend that to include your asking for the maximum amount, matching the amount awarded?
Yeah, the maximum grant amount.
Maximum grant amount. Add that language.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Autumn twice.
Autumn twice.
I did it three times.
Twice.
I really want to support this.
Okay, there.
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
All right. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 6-2022, a resolution authorizing participation in the O-MAG recognition program.
I will just say that that, it seems backwards to me that we would, that you would pass a resolution choosing to participate in the O-MAG recognition program after you've finished the entire program. But that is the way that O-MAG set it up. So the resolution that they provided to us, which is basically what this is, says we already did everything we were supposed to do and now we recognize our, recognize us as participants in the program and give us the $2,600 that we earned. Absolutely, I agree, yes.
Make a motion to.
Second.
Sarah?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on to 14. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase of 114 water meters from Mural Systems at a cost of $29,640.
So these would be the water meters for the new Kinder Wells, part of the new Kinder Wells building that's going on right now. We have to purchase them and install them before people can buy the property. And then at that time, they pay a tap fee and we will recoup the money. So, but because it's over budget spending, $10,000, that's why it's up to you all to, you know, to.
And over time, we will get that money back after properties are sold. Yes, ma'am.
Motion that we approve the purchase of the 114 water meters at a cost of $29,640.
Second that.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve budget amendment, general permit slash inspections, meters, 114, needed for sections eight and nine of the Kinder Wells addition, new build. Funds are necessary to procure the meters. The original outlay will be recovered through individual tap fees as the houses are built and sold.
So this is amending our budget to include this expense and offsetting with the new revenue.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Aaron?
Yes.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to define parameters for use of $20,000 in capital improvement budget earmarked for the new library project. Excuse me.
So we provided information in the city manager's report. If you, if you guys can't see that. So this here, page five, got page five of the city manager's report. It's the second, the second paragraph of the library trust information. And so this here, you all determined that we would have $20,000 set aside in capital improvement sales tax monies for the use of the new library. There had been conversation in the past about whether this might be used as matching debts for a grant, whether this might be used for debt service. The library trust has a project that they're wanting to do, so. The library trust has a project that they're wanting to do, so it had never, you all had never decided how you wanted that money to be spent. So that's what this agenda item is about, is for you to determine how you want it to be spent. And then there's a second item, if you would choose to spend it on that, again, it's over $10,000, so it needs your approval. So the two kind of run hand in hand. Is that clear as mine?
Yes.
So 16 and 17 kind of coordinate it.
Yeah, they coordinate together.
And so, do I understand correctly, then, that we have capital improvement budget of $20,000? They've got a project, I'm combining the two agenda items for information. There's a project identified with a project cost of $41,598. So the library trust has funds. If we use the capital improvement $20,000, then they've got the balance to cover.
That would be correct. And Autumn's on the library trust, so she could probably give more information even than I.
I can't, I was, wasn't sure where I should speak up or where I shouldn't, because I didn't, you know, I don't want to influence certain, I don't know, I just, I didn't want it to get muddy. And, yeah, I am part of the library trust. We are wanting to install all new windows and glazing and doors on the front east wall of the library. We have, I believe we had three bids, three bids for windows. This was. Quotes, excuse me, three quotes. I know, I get those mixed up for some reason. Three quotes for windows and glazing and doors. This was the lowest bid, and we have money in the trust to cover the remaining balance. Obviously, a project. This is one of many items that we hope to tackle in the next coming months on the new library building. I think I just basically said the same thing you did, but I can.
This would cover the east entrance, the main entrance. It would give us new doors and windows. And like the, there's like openings that are wood. Those would come out. We would have all new windows, and all of, all of the windows would be brand new. We're hoping that by replacing these things, that we can regenerate the interest in the building and bring some attention to future friend raising.
Anybody else?
Just really quickly, Mayor, if I can, Mike, Michael, have you been, have you been involved in any conversation about library project with GrantScribe? That's in an email that Bob sent us earlier in the month. I was curious if you've been.
I have not. We talked about other funding through WDRB in the past, but that was primarily for paving and drainage.
Justin, I know there's something in there about, I mean, my point is to say is that this would be like the tip of the spear if there's more money available that we.
I am not involved in the GrantScribe much.
I feel comfortable in saying that we are looking into more grants and have been in conversation with GrantScribe to continue to find future funding for the library, using grants as well. Aaron, are you referring to where Bob says that GrantScribe has not located any library specific grants?
I'm actually looking at the, it's an email dated March 17th, where he said that CDBG grant, public buildings infrastructure, was part of what they were, what he'd been talking about. Yeah, no, I, I think it's all in the same email, maybe, I don't know. I'll make a motion to approve the.
You're still on agenda item number 14?
Yes.
16. 16.
Okay, okay, I can do that. Then I'll make a motion to, well, you know, you're asking to define the parameters. We originally talked about this being used as a matching, I mean, it's a capital improvement tax, so we don't have to talk about, that's available for capital improvement projects. So we don't have to define that as a capital improvement project, right?
Okay. We don't know that item number 17 is going to be approved. So you could do on item number 16 to define the parameters to include, the parameters to include a possible payment to, for the new library building glass project.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the $20,000 capital funds expense for possible project to include new glass windows front.
So that if somebody else says, no, I really, really wanted to go for debt funding, they would have the opportunity to.
Good.
That's your motion?
That's my motion. Thank you for walking me through that hand in hand.
Second.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Would you like for me to reread seven, oh, just go to 17. Actually, thank you very much for reminding me of that. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve use of $20,000 in capital improvement funds for the new library building glass project. Total project cost $41,598. The remainder of the funds to come from the library trust.
And Mayor, our new library director is here, Ms. Jennifer Hudson. Because if you have any questions, you can ask. Ms. Jennifer.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. I don't know what to answer yet, but.
Absolutely. Still, anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Eric?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the City of Perkins operating budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Rachel, would it bother you if we scheduled a special meeting just for budget for this conversation, since there's so much information? And I know you're on a timeline, and you had lots of stuff going on, our city manager's not available tonight. Would that be?
That would be perfect.
A special meeting to focus just on the budget? Is that all right, Amy? Is that something that makes sense?
I would like, I think that would be optimal as well.
Um, hold on a second. There is an action. So the action would be to schedule a special meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
For, let's keep that way. For what date do I?
I propose April 26th. We give Bob time to get back in town. It's a Tuesday, are we typically on Tuesdays?
Yeah, whenever it works for us.
The last Tuesday of the month, two weeks from today. Sadly, I will be out of town traveling for work that day. If I need to reschedule that, I can do that. If that's the only day of the.
Are we always stuck on Tuesdays?
Yeah. But Tuesday really is the only day that works for me. That week. That week.
How about Thursday, the 21st?
What can you do?
Justin?
Sarah, can you not make a Thursday at all?
Did you say the 21st? I'm sorry.
Um, no, the 21st I can do, but Autumn can't. The 26th is the day that I could do.
Justin, can you do the 26th?
Yes.
Is the third an option?
I would rather not do it that first.
Okay.
Too much time for you to.
I just. No. No, that's fine.
What about the 19th? What about next Tuesday?
I can't do the 19th.
Actually, actually, I won't have time to publish according to statute if we do it the 26th. It has to be published two Thursdays before.
28?
Earlier, because the deadline for the journalist is 25th. I just have it to be published by the 25th.
Is anybody available the rest of this week? If you guys need to do it on the 21st, then if that's what works best for the, for you guys, then. I don't remember.
What about the 18th? Are they 18th?
I could change things on the 18th to be here.
Autumn, can you do the 18th?
It's your day off.
Oh, my gosh, that's our day off.
Is that your day for your pickup day?
I know we normally don't do things on a Wednesday, but Wednesday, the 20th?
I've got other things going. This is going to be a challenge to get all of us to align on the same day, y'all.
Sure.
Thursday, is the 14th too early for you?
Yes.
Yeah. I knew it was when I asked the question, so I apologize.
Did I look like a deer in the headlights?
Yes. The same, like, the same deer in the headlights. I have, yeah, okay, I'm with you.
You know what? I'll just cancel my participation in the meeting on the 20th. Well, you said the 26th doesn't work?
It doesn't work. So we can't do Monday?
It needs to be after the 26th?
Before.
Before the 26th.
I can do.
Before the 25th.
I can do any day next week. And we, it doesn't have to be at night, it can be just about anytime, y'all, just tell me what you want to do.
It can be after 5:15. Anytime next week.
Did you say Tuesday was good for you next week or not?
I have something scheduled, but I can cancel if we need it. Then it'd be better I can do it.
If I'm being 100% honest with everybody, a pure Tuesday is the only day next week. Other than, or I could do Wednesday, but I don't.
I'm gonna need somebody to go on par for me. Do the 19th? Justin? Sarah?
What time? I'd love to.
Sweet, I know.
Should eat during this.
I agree. I saw that video. Is the 19th good for you?
Yes, ma'am.
What time? 6:00?
6:00.
If we wanted to do it earlier, we would, it really makes me no difference. I'm here until whatever time we're done, so.
Is it easier for you? Is it easier for you if we go earlier?
I'm sure that the library.
You're dressed live.
On the 19th, right? The library hasn't programmed until 5:00.
Want to do 5:30?
5:30.
Okay.
5:30. And I will plan to be here. I'll be, I don't want anything but money, so I'll spend it. And so. I'll be available by phone. If anybody needs me.
So we're going to table.
We're going, so. I think we're about to make a motion.
I just brought up the conversation. I just asked a question.
That was in the discussion part.
On item number 18, you could have a motion, the possible action would be a motion, a special hearing, a special committee for that, okay, on budget.
Okay, I can make that motion, too. Make a motion that we set a special meeting on Tuesday, the 19th at 6:00, did we say 5:30 or 6:00?
5:30.
5:30 PM. Here in the chamber. For consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the City of Perkins operating budget for fiscal year 22 and 23.
Second that.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to select two nominees from the list of nominees on the 2022 Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group Official Ballot for Board of Trustees Election.
If I may, I have professional experience with Mrs. Greg Moak. She is the secretary for the clerks and treasurers Oklahoma organization, and she was phenomenal. Kept us on and on, particularly communicating, so that's someone I want to pick out.
Amy, do you know any of us?
Kind of like to know more about Mr. Chad Williams. Honestly, he seems like a, he's a veteran, active with the Choctaw City Council. He has a son who is, has cerebral palsy, so he seems like a well-rounded individual. But again, it's just a short paragraph, hard to, judge on that. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
He's such a big job.
I think last year, we just took no action. We've done that for a while.
It's all I, familiar.
Well, I mean, Rachel, if you know, if you know.
I mean, if you personally know.
Miss Moak, I'm happy to make that be.
I would, too.
I just, I mean, I know you all always say you know any of them, so.
Yeah.
I actually do this time.
Do we have to choose two?
Just getting ready to ask that. Good job.
I mean, I know that it's on the agenda to choose two, but what if we didn't want to?
It says you may vote for two. So May is not showing, so I think you could vote for just one.
I'll make a motion that we select Lindsey Moak.
My second.
Eric?
Yes.
Mayor? I'm sorry, Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to submit two selected nominees to City of Perkins official vote on the election of trustees on the 2022 Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group Official Ballot.
Make a motion to submit the nominee selected.
One second.
Eric?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Line 21, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Right, none. So, shall we adjourn? Make a motion that we adjourn this meeting tonight?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Good.
Get two more practice.
I was gonna say, now I have two more.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. Ready? I got it right here. I thought it did, where did it go? We're gonna. This one? Okay, call to order, roll call, and establish a quorum.
We'll do that again.
Do we start over?
Yeah, but let's, let's.
Let's call the, call the agenda process, if you will.
Call what? All the time? The Perkins Public Works Authority Agenda Regular Meeting? Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. Sorry.
Okay. Now I'm calling.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Old habits.
Um, Mayor? Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes, ma'am.
Aaron?
Yes.
Consideration and action on consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting, March 8th, 2022. Approval of purchase orders. Acceptance of financial reports. Approval of budget amendment, Public Works, Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Equipment grant pays 50% of expense related to equipment for sewer maintenance. Approval of Resolution 5-2022, a resolution amending solid waste collection fees. Recognition of the Vice Mayor of the City of Perkins. City Commission as Vice Chair of the Public Works Authority. Acceptance of the city manager's report. Anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept.
Second that.
Aaron?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, when I get cold, I yawn. No, I get cold, I start yawning.
All right. Public appearances, petitions, reminances, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the PPWA trust members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on the items not on today's agenda. Take it, none? Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Just make that be at the same special meeting? I mean, it has to be its own special meeting, but on the same day and time? Am I good with everybody?
Okay, so we're gonna do that on the.
Don't know the budgets.
I'll make a motion to move this item to a special meeting on Tuesday, the 19th, immediately following the City Commission Special Meeting.
Second that. New bus, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Dump the gun.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes, ma'am.
New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have not been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Anyone? None? Motion that we adjourn the Perkins Public Works Authority meeting here tonight.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn? Justin? Aaron?
Yes.
Perkins Industrial Development Authority Agenda Regular Meeting, Tuesday, April 12th.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Aaron?
Yes.
Max Redd.
Ready? Consideration and action on consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting on December 14th, 2021. Approval of purchase orders. Acceptance of financial reports. Recognition of the Vice Mayor of the City of Perkins, City Commission, as the Vice Chairman of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority. Acceptance of city manager's report.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Aaron?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Public appearances, petitions, rem.
I need to read that every time.
I tell you what. Caught him out tonight. Communications and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the PIDA trust members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. None? Consideration, discussion, and possible action on approving contract with Michael Green CPA in the amount of $2,800, $500 to audit and prepare financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2022. Anybody comment?
Aaron?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sam?
Mayor?
Yes.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Make a motion to revisit this in a special meeting on Tuesday, the 19th, immediately following the Perkins Public Works Authority budget meeting.
Second that.
Aaron?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes.
Business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Industrial Development Authority Regular Meeting.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes, ma'am.
Aaron?
Yes.
I don't know who she's talking about. Jesus, Mayor. Oh, that's me. I might be able to make it to my great daughters, too.